Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the November 5th meeting of the Common Council order. I will ask the clerk to call the rule to determine a quorum.
Alderman Probst.
Aye. I mean here. Sorry.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Sangstak.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Chapeleski.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Ten present, none excused.
We have a quorum. Alderman Probst will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We have four items up for public hearing this evening. I'll ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
A hearing on the special use permit for Michaels Corporation for a batch plant and associated trucking operations on a portion of the Quad Graphics site located at 555 South 108th Street and 11000 West Theodore Trecker Way.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the northwest quadrant of Highway 100 and Theo Trecker Drive is the Quad Graphics site, which is on a parcel of about 50 acres. Quad Graphics is proposing to lease a portion of the property to a tenant, Michaels, for them to allow for a batch plant to be operating on that site. What I want to mention tonight is that the area's own manufacturing, which allows a batch plant as a special use. Now, a special use is a permitted use by right along with, because it's usually a unique situation such as a batch plant, it allows for the Common Council to adopt special conditions to mitigate potentially adverse effects and probably to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the neighborhood and the community. Now, because Quad Graphics is asking for amendment to their site plan and requesting a special use, a special use requires that a site plan be reviewed, and that's what we'll be amending this evening is their existing site plan. Because a site plan needs to be reviewed, we review it as in terms of a total premise. Now, this is the existing site plan that Quad Graphics has, and if they were to build a new building, we would still require a site plan amendment and architectural review, but not a special use. But because this is a special use, and this is the proximate area, Michaels has not submitted to us a detailed site plan, so we're not exactly sure where it's at, but this is the general vicinity, we're going to be reviewing it as a special use. Now, the steps of the initial process is obviously the applicant submits an application, and then we send a notice out to the newspaper for publication and a notification to the residents. And then the staff reviews that and comes up with recommendations as to how to best mitigate that issue, and then we refer it to the Plan Commission. Now, on October 23rd, the Plan Commission convened and reviewed the application for Michaels and recommended approval subject to some additional conditions. Now, the applicant has to comply with those conditions or the special use will not be granted. And then the Common Council will consider this at their discretion. Now, for overview, the proposal was for a temporary batch plant. They indicated that they would expire in 2018 on 3.5 acres. Now, they're asking for their hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but theoretically it's 24 hours because they want to be able to, at their option, be able to do at night. And that would be involving about 300 trucks a day. Now, the truck route that's being propo-- whoops. The truck route that's being proposed would be using Fairview and then come up on the Hank Aaron Trail and then come down into the project area, then exit via this frontage road onto Highway 100 and service their batch plant that way. They will not use, they have proposed that they would not use Theo Trecker because one of the objections obviously was traffic in the neighborhood. And the Hank Aaron Trail will actually be used not by Michaels but by many of the contractors that are going to be providing services to the zoo interchange during the next five plus whatever years it takes to get that done. And they're also providing to water down and vacuum the trucks to provide street sweepers to keep the site area as clean as possible. This is the site plan that they provide us, which really doesn't tell us a whole lot, but we got a good idea of what they're trying to propose. And as you can hopefully tell in here, these are the three piles that they would have for their stone that they would bring a truck into the site, and then they would dump that stone into the batch plant and then mix the cement with the stone and put it into cement trucks. And those, the trucks would then go out and deliver it to their respective sites. Now, when the Plan Commission proposed this, the Plan Commission said, as they have historically, that all areas have to be paved, including their driveways, their storage area, and their parking. Now, Michaels has countered by requesting that we allow them to use asphalt millings, and that's technically an asphalt road that has been cut up and hauled away, and those millings are then grounded up and then they'd just be put back down. They're not as good as an asphalt road, but they're, they have some of the properties of an asphalt road. Also, the second major difference is that because this is a special use, we are looking at the entire site, not just whatever three and a half acre plus or minus that Michaels wants us to look at. We look at the entire site. And then requiring them to pave the site or return it to a dust-free erosion-controlled surface, either paving or grass, which they did not want to do. And then from a staff perspective, usually the Plan Commission doesn't look at hours of operation, but to mitigate noise, the staff has recommended something along the lines of our noise ordinance that they go from 7:00 AM, operate from 7:00 AM to 10, or operate from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Now, and they want to operate, as I mentioned earlier, six to six, but with the option of whenever they needed to or had to. The Plan Commission, just for a little more details on that, some of the rationale was to reduce dust. Dust is certainly a big issue in the neighborhood, and we've got to be cognizant of that, and we've got to make sure that people don't have to close their windows so dust doesn't, for fear of dust. And so we want to make sure that the company mitigates all these issues or they would, as part of our approval process. Whether they want to do them or not, that's a separate issue, but for the city to approve it, they'd have to abide by these conditions. And then also because of our ordinance requirements, they're going to have to pave the entire area, and also they wanted to use asphalt millings, and that the staff had recommended and the Plan Commission rejecting that idea. Now, to Michaels' credit, it's certainly cheaper, and they could use it to mitigate the dust control and they could water it regularly. But even with that, millings will be somewhat more absorbent than asphalt or concrete paving, but as they dry out, they start generating dust again. So, and once they get filled up with dirt, then they're not so porous anymore. We have not allowed, the Plan Commission has never recommended allowing anybody to use millings. Now, the city uses millings for an underlayment of a roadway and maybe sometimes on the side of the road for emergency stopping, but not for an area that we would want to drive trucks over to be able to keep it dust-free. Also, the Plan Commission recommended that all the areas that are currently gravel in that area be paved. Now, the Plan Commission has the option to recommend to the Common Council, and certainly the Common Council's discretion is whether they accept that recommendation or not, but the Plan Commission recommended that all the gravel area be paved, which will help reduce dust in the area. Now, initially, Quad Graphics was not required to pave all the gravel area because their plans, as presented to us, was to be have a number of expansions in that area, which would then tear it up. And we wanted to promote this. Well, obviously with this current proposal, it doesn't look like Quad Graphics is going to be doing that anytime soon, so we're saying, okay, let's get this site in condition that we require all other sites to do, which is to be either paved or grassed area. Obviously, Michaels doesn't want to do that. They think the city is being arbitrary, and we think we're just being trying to keep dust down and work this out the best we can. As for the hours of operation, as I mentioned, we want to keep them consistent with our city noise ordinance. Because there's so many heavy trucks and so much batch plant operations, we're trying to keep the noise down, so obviously in the neighborhood, we're certainly familiar with the other problems that we've had with that neighborhood. We don't want to exacerbate that problem, and so we're recommending limiting their operations. And Michaels certainly doesn't want to have that limited, and they suggest that because we're approximately 1,000 feet away, and that if they don't operate on this site, they would go to another site owned by DOT, and because that's state land, the city would not have any influence over, and they're certainly correct on that part. Additionally, above and beyond what the Plan Commission has recommended, what the staff is proposing to the Common Council to consider is additional road restoration and dust patrol Upon termination of all hauling, all the roads that they've driven over have to be returned to their current condition or better, and that during the operation, these roads are going to probably get kind of dusty and dirty, and we're requiring them, at the discretion of the city engineer, to clean those roadways. And then as for additional dust control, we want to make sure that we don't further complicate the problems of the neighborhood by dust, and we've proposed a number of additional measures such as paving and watering the roads and cleaning the roads and watering the rock piles when they're in operation, those sorts of things. We've received, since the Plan Commission, and we've received a number of communications from people in the neighborhood, both businesses and residents concerned about this particular project. And as a result of that, we're looking at some additional measures that we may want to consider, but we might consider suggesting to the Common Council that they consider for mitigation. And colders in particular had some rather interesting observations. One of the conditions that the city has with colders at this access road or this Highway 108th, Frontage Road, is that colders has to maintain that. So, because they're the primary, almost sole user of that. We'll have to have some additional restrictions to require if this is approved, Michaels to be able to take over those maintenance responsibilities so that colders doesn't show them that responsibility. And then we're also looking at some additional screening measures, although that site is fairly high, when the trees lose all their leaves, what kind of vista that they're going to have, so we've got to look at those issues. And then the residents have articulated a large number of concerns, and that we've taken into consideration and that we're reviewing, and they're generally lumped into the number of issues that we hear constantly from the neighborhood currently, such as daytime and nighttime noise, dust, hours of operation, traffic, and no community benefit. And I'm assuming what they're talking about is that it doesn't pay property taxes, but because it's manufacturing machinery and it's tax exempt, but that's certainly an important consideration. As a result, the Plan Commission has recommended approval, and Michaels did request that we delay this hearing tonight, yesterday, and we said no, because we've already sent out notices to the people and they're going to be here. We couldn't contact you in time, but we can still hold this public hearing, and if Michaels wants to make some additional presentation at a later date, we'd be more than delighted to hear that. Or if they want some more time to digest what your comments are and make some other modifications, we're more than welcome to give more time. We'll just see what they have to say. But technically, we have 60 days from today's date to make, for the Common Council to make a decision, and if they want more time, all they have to do is ask for it. So that concludes my portion of the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, and if you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Do we have questions from the Common Council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I'd just like to announce that this is the public hearing this evening. It's your opportunity to testify on this issue and matter. It will not be discussed or acted upon this evening. The matter will be referred after the hearing to the Safety and Development Committee. It will be on the December 11th agenda. That meeting is Wednesday, December 11th at 6:00 PM in Room 128. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lysick. Are there any other questions from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
John, the main concerns coming from the neighborhood, and I think you addressed them well, were noise, traffic, dust, the community benefit, and the hours of operation. Jumping back to the concept of precedence, if we allow this here, do we have to allow it on other sites of similar type? That'd be part A of the question. Part B of the question is, let's say the special use is granted until December 31st of 2018. Future highway projects come up and there's a desire to get a special use again. If we allow it once, the precedence is set again for the exact same site. Correct?
That is correct. We look at every special use. Once it's granted, it goes with the land, and it stays in place until that use is no longer operating on that site for a year, then it loses its grandfather clause. So if they were to leave on the 18th and another batch plant would come in, and they were going to say operate under the same terms and conditions that the prior batch plant operated on, we would have to have some very compelling reasons not to re-approve it.
Okay. On other development projects, you know, oftentimes there, for example, for wastewater retention or what have you, there may be some retention ponds placed on the site, and they have to be engineered in order to meet all the standards by the state and the city in order to accommodate like a 100-year storm and things like that. With this, our ordinance strictly prohibits the release of dust into the air beyond the property line. Are you comfortable that the, are you comfortable that what we're asking them to do under the special use would prevent 0% dust transmission beyond their property line?
Because we have the special use, I can't guarantee that it would not be violated. However, if it did, if it was violated, then there was dust going off the neighborhood, that would be grounds to revoke the special use. So that's always the Common Council's prerogative, that if they violate the terms of, if any special use recipient violates the term of the special use, the Common Council can withdraw the special use.
Okay, then, and thank you, Mayor, for letting me continue here. In terms of the particulate matter, the dust getting into the air, is it a reasonable stipulation to require constant monitoring at the site where if it goes beyond a certain amount, they automatically have to shut down operations? Does the technology exist, and is that a reasonable requirement to put on a special use?
The technology exists, and reasonableness is the issue. And the city will certainly be reasonable in all things, but it, any complaint can be referred to the Director of the Building Department or the city engineer, and they will investigate any complaints such as dust.
Okay. Regarding the traffic flow, they have come a long way since it first came to us originally. The plan was to come out on Theo Trecker. The plan is now to use the Hank Aaron Trail, which the DOT shut down. They planned on shutting it down anyway. The question I have is, would there be any, anything that would prohibit us from reversing their flow so that when traffic is exiting right now off 108th onto Highway 100 and wants to make a left turn, it may block traffic from colders and things like that? If we reverse the flow to have them make a right turn in, leave over on Fairview Avenue, is that something we can require?
The city can require any reasonable measure to help improve the process. Actually, I think that would probably be a very good recommendation to make, is that it would be safer to make right turns only, but that's something that we can certainly do.
Okay. Regarding, again, the whole quad site has to come under review, so it's not just the one, and I understand the city's request for the paving of both the area that Michaels wants to use, but also the rest of the quad site. Does this mean that we've got not only site landscaping, but there's an access point on Theo Trecker between 108th and 109th? There's a driveway to a speedway, the driveway to the quad, then you've got 109th Street, all in close proximity. Is it reasonable to ask or to require that that driveway be made inbound only?
That driveway that you're discussing, I think is certainly problematic. Whether we deal with this special use or not, we need to talk to Quad Graphics about that particular issue because it certainly runs the gambit of being potentially very dangerous, and I think that it should be made a change in there.
Okay. And again, Mayor, thank you for letting me continue here. A couple more questions. In a letter dated October 31st from Michaels, it was sent to myself, and I'm guessing other Alderman's got it, I know staff had received a copy. It says benefits to West Alice, and this is again a letter from Michaels, and they're saying that they're willing to pay for fire and rescue services used due to a Michaels incident, and they will pay for fire and rescue teams training on their equipment for up to three hours. Is this something, and this is something that we can't require of them, but if they're offering it to us, we can, can we make sure it's stipulated in the special use permit?
Because this is just a special use, we cannot require that of anyone. If they would like to be corporately responsible and offer it, we'd be certainly delighted to take it.
Okay. And lastly, in terms of special uses, it sounds easy to say that if the dust moves beyond the property or they operate beyond their hours, that we can pull their special use, but in reality, that's a process, and it's a process that could take a few months, maybe even get hung up in the courts. Is that, well, how long is that process, and what sort of drain on the city resources might that be?
That's certainly--
And have we ever done it?
It could be indeterminate at this point. Now, Michaels is a responsible corporation. We would certainly hope that whatever action we approve at the city level, that they're going to try and comply with their fullest abilities, and we would certainly expect nothing less.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Barzak.
I defer Alderman Barzak.
The, a couple of questions for you. First of all, the Plan Commission approved this, and I just want to make the point that even though Plan Commission proved that, it still comes to the entire council for total review and changes can be made. Is that correct?
The Plan Commission is an advisory body to the Common Council. They have submitted their advisory opinion to the Common Council.
And one of the things I know that Plan Commission discusses, they wanted hours, I believe it was Monday through Saturday from 7:00 to 10:00, and they restricted them. Actually, Michaels did from 7:00 to 6:00, but then they wanted a, they're asking for some special consideration to be able to run 24/7 should they choose. Is that correct?
If we were to, if you were to adopt their recommended hours, it would be virtually 24 hours.
And we have the right then to deny and set reasonable hours that we would feel fit for that?
The Common Council has the right and obligation to provide all reasonable options.
Zignagel's right down the street. Have we issued a special use to Zignagel?
No, they're grandfathered into the current operation.
So the city has never issued a special use for a batch plant?
That is correct.
Just to understand this again, Zignagel runs their hours, et cetera, unrestricted because of being grandfathered, not being restricted or ever have been restricted by the city of West Alice. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The, a little bit on what Alderman May said, the entire quad plant now comes under review with a special use because it becomes now a different use. So at that particular point, down Theodore Trecker Drive, just past 112th, I think it's to the west of that, there's an opening, and it's unscreened. At this point, we can now, should this go through, we can also demand for that entire area to be screened, possibly, I think our standard is 16-foot fences. I think that's what we did with the Zablocki area. Is that correct?
Those are some of the terms and conditions that you could certainly incorporate.
So we can, to further on, hope to, if we have the entire plan in front of us, hopefully we're going to have quad in so we can talk about this, because this would be a great opportunity, should the batch plant go through, that we'd be able to have that hole back in with 16-foot fences all the way down, that we could screen the neighborhood, from the neighborhood, we could screen it from the, to the west side there. And then I'm a little concerned with colders. Now, colders, they pay some pretty good taxes. My understanding is Michaels is going to pay zero. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the colders operation, having as many trucks running through and then the dust over to the colders, we can, at this point, be able to have quad again come in and have some type of screening down on that, what would be the north-east end of the corner where colders sit, so they could be totally screened from this operation also. Am I assuming that's not an unreasonable demand?
We are looking into that now to see what kind of screening would be effective.
That is excellent. On the actual site plan, if we went back and we saw the blue over there, we can, again, nothing more than we required from Zablocki requires 16-foot fences for that entire site to be fenced in and screened. Correct?
We could, the Plan Commission has recommended approval. One of the conditions was a revised site landscaping plan for the entire site, which we would require Quad Graphics, if they were to put on another addition, we'd require the same thing. So those will be all part, we haven't, they have not submitted them, so we can't review them.
Which really disappoints me highly. They're coming to us and they, and they, you know, they've sent, I don't know how many communications Michaels has sent to us, and I got all kinds here, and I got a folder, and yet we have not seen any kind of review or anything from them, and it baffles me that they want to be, and Quad Graphics want to be good neighbors, and they want to be good corporate citizens, and yet the council or the Alderman persons of the area have not seen anything that they're proposing to do. So I'm hoping that we really have this time to sit down and, the last one I'm just going to bring up, Quad Graphics, I think they have, they have rights to run 24/7 with their trucks up and down, so again, we'll be able to control those hours on their trucks. Is that correct?
Actually, I had not reviewed that. That's an interesting point to make. Quad Graphics is certainly, has been a very good corporate citizen, one of our largest private employers, and we've worked very closely with Quad Graphics, and we hopefully continue, we'll do so. We certainly wouldn't want to do anything that would mitigate their ability to maximize the potential of that site. Now, that being said, we could still take a look at what additional they want to do, such as Michaels, and regulate those hours. I'm not sure what we would want to do with their operations, but we can talk about that.
I think what you said is excellent. They have been just really, really good neighbors. I happen to live very close to quad, and they have been great neighbors, and I'm hoping that they understand fully that should an operation like this be granted, that, you know, the reasons that we would want to, again, control some things that have not happened in the past. And I think one of them, I know that they let trucks idle in the back over there, they just let them run, and I don't know if the guys are in their sleeper berths or whatever they're doing, you know, because they probably don't unload till 6:00 in the morning. And I'm hoping, you know, that would come under review, so I'm just, I'm just hoping that we see something from Michaels, or we see something from Quad Graphics, that they can show us what they're intending to do with landscaping, et cetera. And I'm hoping that both Alderman May, myself, and other members at the council have an opportunity to sit down and really go over their, their site plan and bring that thing really up to date and improve it vastly, should this operation be approved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Sangstak.
Mayor Devine. John, recognizing the fact that appears are the primary concerns of the residents of the third district, is that pollution, specifically noise pollution, the emission pollution, concerns with vehicular traffic going through or close to the areas where they're not supposed to be going, has, has the commission given any consideration to something punitive in nature? We understand that, that the ultimate issue here, whether to be non-compliant or whether or not the special use can be revoked, but that can take oftentimes just a very lengthy time framework in the court system, and I don't know whether or not the Plan Commission has conferred with our city attorney's office as to whether or not, in terms of something punitive in nature, we can assess damages, assess fines, penalties, if there's non-compliance. You know, oftentimes, my experience, and I know Alderman Ranky's in the fifth district as well, is there's no trucking signs on-- there, there's no trucking signs on Cleveland Avenue in West Dallas. And too often, there's non-compliance with truckers and, and too often, there's citations that are not issued. And yet, we get the calls from our residents saying, "Well, what are you doing for us?" And I think that's a concern I have, quite frankly, with, to all the persons, all the persons, I mean, and all person Barzak, is that they're going to have, they'll be inundated with telephone calls from third district residents as to what are they doing? You know, the special use has been given, but yet, there's non-compliance. And yeah, we can, the ultimate is none, is a, is a revocation of the special use. But I was wondering whether we can have something punitive in nature, fines, penalties for non-compliance, trucks. I think if trucks, for whatever reason, are not using those roads as opposed to be on, and it's, as a consequence of that, the residents are being, their, their right of privacy and liberty for use of their home, it's not being considered. I would like to see whether that could be taken into consideration. Hit the Michaels in the pocketbook, in advance, there's non-compliance. Of course, that's in advance of there being hearings to revoke a special use.
Actually, we do. The big mallet that we have is certainly is the revocation of the special use. About when it comes to the dust issues, we also have a nuisance ordinance in place. And so they could be, excuse me, that could also be brought into play to help mitigate that problem.
Thank you, Alderman Sangstock. Are there any other questions from the council on this public hearing item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Probst.
Alderman Probst.
Have there been, I know that Michaels has spent some considerable time speaking and communicating with members of the council. Have there been any neighborhood meetings? Have there been any time for Michaels to address the neighborhood concerns at all, directly with the residents?
There have not been as of today. Doesn't mean there could not be.
Alderman Weigl.
John, a couple of quick questions. This, all this work is for the Zoo Interchange project. That's correct?
That is correct.
No contracts have been let yet, no bids have been opened. Michaels does not have a contract yet.
As far as I understand, that's correct. They may have some subcontracts, but we would not know that.
Okay. If, if this is not allowed to happen, that work will go to some other contractor, very possibly Zignagel right down the street, or the batch plant on 84th and Schlinger. So those, the volume would still be the same, the 300 trucks a day, but they would just be rumbling up and down there. And there would be, we'd have, the city would have no control over any of those operations. Is that correct? They're allowed to operate, they're existing, they're, they're all there already?
It depends on where the batch plant would be located. As for Zignagel, no. If somebody wanted to have a batch plant in some other location that was not on state-owned land, we would regulate.
But those, what I'm talking about existing, the Zignagel property and the, and the plant on 84th and Schlinger, they're essentially, do I understand correctly, that's exactly what those are, as batch plants there? So, so we already have two existing, I don't know if the one on Schlinger is actually in the city of West Dallas?
No, it's not. 10 degrees in the city of Milwaukee.
That's just over the line. So, but, so if Michaels doesn't get, if, if they're not allowed, if we can't come to an agreement with Michaels, or Michaels can't come to agree with our terms, then they won't get the contract, or they might possibly go somewhere else.
Or some other company will go on some other community and open a batch plant.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Weigl. Any other questions from the council on this item?
Mayor Dan.
Alderman Rankie.
I have the same concerns as the other Aldermen that have spoken. I guess my main concern is of what benefit is this to the city of West Dallas? And it was mentioned in your rhetoric that it is a temporary batch plant. Therefore, we won't be deriving any taxes at all from this business. Do I understand that correctly? And I'm wondering, why aren't we deriving any taxes from a business that would be here in proximity, I would say, at least a year?
First of all, any business that comes to the city of West Dallas is good business. We would love business, we love the creation of jobs. It just happens to be that this particular batch plant has been defined by the State Department of Revenue as personal property. And manufacturing property, or manufacturing equipment, excuse me, manufacturing equipment is exempt for property taxes. So that's why it's exempt.
I see. And I have to share this with, with the audience as well. I've received a lot of emails against this project. Certainly, if there are any people out there that are for this project, I would appreciate getting the emails as well in favor of this project. Because in order to make good judgment, Alderman has to look at the whole picture. And obviously, if everyone is against this project, this would hold a lot of weight in what we have, we will initially decide for this company. So please, if anyone is in favor, let us know as well. And I thank you. I thank everyone that, that has sent us their, their opinion. This is a democratic society and we'd like to hear from all of you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council on this item? Okay. Are there any questions from the audience on this item? If there are, we ask that you use the microphone up here on the podium and sign in either before or after your comments. Could you please state your name and address for our record?
Sure. Pat Rude, 820 South 113th Street. Just a few, just ordinary questions. I, I've been living there for 50 years. And we've had, you know, dust also from the other plant, which is right across the street. The main thing is, why should we let you come in and you pay no taxes? I lived there 50 years and I pay taxes. It is not right. I mean, I'm, I'm putting out money every year and I love, I love West Dallas. But the thing is, if you can't contribute to all these people and me, then why should we even think about having you here?
First of all, I work for the city of West Dallas. I'm not Michael's. And I do pay taxes. But your statements are well taken. The purpose of this public hearing is for you to articulate your thoughts, which are those, to the mayor and the common council so they can hear them. So just feel free to...
Oh, I should add, you?
Tell them your thoughts.
Actually, we often wonder why we allow John here, too, so.
Well, the thing is that it's just, just sounds ridiculous. I mean, you know, if you pay taxes, you should get what you, what you, you know, pay into it. And they're going to be making the money. And they went to other places besides this and they got denied. So what does that mean? So they can, they can spend all this money someplace else, if they want to go, because we don't want them. Because of the fact that it does cause problems, I don't care what anybody says, you can't, you're not going to control the wind. I don't care who you are, just keep the dust from blowing. Because we have that already now. So why should we have twice as much? You know, especially for our kids. You know, it might not affect us, because we're older, but it would affect our kids. I don't care, as long as they live in this area. And like I say, this is, and the traffic is going to be horrendous. 300 an hour times, what, eight hours or 10 hours? I mean, Highway 100 is a mess now. And there's traffic seven days a week. And then you want more trucks? Oh, come on. I mean, this is, this is terrible. And for such a small area, it's going to be just horrendous with the traffic. Plus the people driving in to come to work. And then especially on the corner of Highway 100 and Kearney's. With that filling station there and that quad's there, my God, there could be accidents almost every day. It's, it's really bad. In fact, they shouldn't even put an SA there. But that's a side point. But like I say, it's, it's up to you people what you're going to do, but I'm totally, totally against it. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to ask questions? Or make statements? And just so y'all know, we don't, we can try to answer your questions, we don't usually engage in debate in this process. It's more of our opportunity to listen to you. And you can also line up and pre-sign in if you want to save a little time.
My name is Joe Getz. My wife and I have lived at 738 South 114th Street for the last 15 years approximately. We are the end house on 114th Street, so we will be the closest to their batch plant, the proposed plant. We are totally against this idea. When we moved into the neighborhood, we knew we were moving into a residential neighborhood that was on the verge of light industry. We sat out, I personally sat out in front of the house before we purchased it, in the morning, in the afternoon, evening, to see what it would be like. It has gotten much worse since 1997. It's unbearable for us to sleep at night sometimes. We can hear the trucks rumbling in Quad Graphics parking lot. We've called our mayor many times, our Alderman many times. He has tried to address the situation. We still hear the noise. Five years is a temporary solution, or a temporary plant for them, five years is a lifetime for the neighborhood. We're not in favor of it. My wife and I, I understand what they're saying. I understand it will help Michaels, but we're not in favor of it whatsoever. So please, vote no when you get the chance.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we don't applause, please. We're not, excuse me, we're not going to applaud tonight. We don't allow celebrations in our council chambers, please. Thank you.
My name, I've got laryngitis. My name is Frank Weisenberger. I live on 109th Street. We're very familiar with Mayor, with Alderman May and Alderman Barzak. They've tried their best with a lot of the problems we have. But we, I've lived in the area for a good 50 years. And the changes, just like the other gentleman has said, is tremendous. We've got problems. It's taken years and years and years, and it's really hasn't been resolved. There's a lot of accidents on Highway 100 and Trecker Drive. There's a lot of noise, there's a lot of trucks. We've got signs up there, no parking. Some ice parked there. They don't go to the gas station, no offense to the gas station, but they get a hot dog or a donut or something. But the cars are running. It says, "No parking." We're in an era, when we have laws, people ignore them. And our own police department are trying their best, but they can't be everywhere. We pass another new law, it's good for a couple of months, they're right back to doing the same thing. I'm opposed to this plant because I know it's going to create a lot of problems. It's not beneficial to any of us. And I've got a bone to pick with the state, with their construction. I have never seen such hodgepodge in my entire life where they tear up an intersection, work on it, get it partially done, tear up another intersection, and they're still working on the first one regarding, regarding Blue Mountain Road and Highway 100. Today, they're pouring concrete. They're tearing up the other, the part towards West Dallas. You know, do the project, get that part done, then tear up the other section. Highway 100 and Greenfield Avenue has been a mess for two years. The city can't do anything about it because it happens to be state. They're still working on Greenfield Avenue and the, and the overpass. There's trucks there all the time. Can any of you people do anything about it with the state? No, because it's state and they're going to do what they want. It's about time we show them that. West Dallas is West Dallas and we're interested in our community. So I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions or comments on this item?
Ronald Schnell. I live on South 109th Street. I just have a real quick question. The area that's proposed for this batching plant, I'm sort of familiar with, I grew up in the area. It's kind of a lowland area, marshy. How much fill are they going to bring in? And has the DNR weighed in on any, you know, alterations on this, you know, the site plan? Because to me, it would be considered a wetlands. I don't know if the DNR's gotten involved in this and had any comments, or if they would, would have any jurisdiction over that being a Quad Graphics property.
Mr. Steeble, do you have a...
Yes. DNR, if it were wetland, they would be regulated.
Okay. Because it is...
I do not believe it is a wetland.
Yeah.
It's a lowland, but it's not a wetland.
Okay.
I'm Christine Leonard. I live on 110th Street. And I have a question. You had talked about there were, there are already two existing batch plants. And my question was, if whoever, whatever company instead uses those two batch plants instead of building something on Quad, would the tax implications be different for the company versus, here, they're not paying anything, they're bringing their own equipment in, therefore, they're not paying any taxes to operate? Would that still be the case if they used the other two existing batch plants?
Correct. I'm assuming the Department of Revenue was consistent and they're going to take all batch plants, that part of the equipment is tax exempt. And they'll probably, on those other sites, there'll be other buildings that will be taxed, and the land will be taxed. But since the land here is already taxed under Quad Graphics, it's just the equipment that they're bringing in is tax exempt.
So if they use the existing equipment, all of the work that they're going to do on the Zoo Interchange won't be taxed? Is that, that's what you're saying?
The batch plant portion would not be taxed.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else with questions or comments this evening?
Susie Lasbrants Metzenheim. Been in West Dallas since I was three years old. So it's been over 60 years. I just want you to know, I love West Dallas. I love my neighborhood. I was raised on 113th and Washington and have resided on 111th Place, which is already a cut-through street from Theo Trecker Way to Washington. I'm very concerned about the noise, the air pollution. Mostly the noise, because I have to say that, I always have my windows open, I rarely use my air conditioner. And I've noticed even the traffic and the noise from the existing, the last year's worth of construction. When I'm laying in bed with my window open, I can hear it. So I can't even imagine what it's going to be like with these trucks and all the noise going. And also, even if the trucks can't use Theo Trecker Way, or they don't find a way to use that, other cars that enter Highway 100 or the traffic pattern at Highway 100 in Theo Trecker Way, people will learn to deviate from that spot because they don't want to be near there, and then they'll start using our streets as cut-through streets. And I have a three-and-a-half-year-old grandson. I represent my aunt and my mother, who all live within a block radius of me and all my entire neighborhood, who probably wouldn't come to a meeting like this and speak up for themselves. So I'm representing them also. That I really want you to seriously think about the decision you're about to make. And I want to make sure that our neighborhood stays safe and clean. Thank you.
I'm Susie Getz. I'm Joe Getz's wife. Live at 738 South 114th Street. And the comment I just wanted to add was that I could stand in my front yard and I could see this, and there's not one person that can tell me, if I can see that from my front yard, that I won't hear it. Whether it's eight hours a day, two hours a day, 10 hours a day, or 24 hours a day, period. I don't want them here at all. Thank you for giving me time.
Nancy Parker, 727 South 111th Street.
727 South 111th Street. Four houses down from Trecker. I guess my question is, don't we have enough cement places or concrete makers that, why do we have to pull in another one? I mean, West Dallas is industry, or was. And it just seems to me like, good grief, we must have enough concrete makers around here, because they have to be tearing up streets everywhere, as somebody else said. Why do we have to bring in somebody from out of town? Why isn't the money going locally? I'd rather see it go to Milwaukee than I would to up near wherever he's from. I can't remember. It starts with a B. Brownsville, is that? And I just wonder, why have they asked to come in? Have the, has the state demanded that more concrete batch plants be down here?
No. We do not, as a municipality, get involved in regulating competition. This is a free economy. Anybody can compete. Anybody can apply for a special use. So we do not regulate the types of businesses for the purpose of competition.
Aren't there enough of them around? I mean, why would this plant feel that they can come in here for this construction? Do they feel there's a shortage?
Obviously, the company thinks they can provide a competitive advantage by having their own batch plant. And that's what it's all about.
I am against it, by the way.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on public hearing number one?
Can you get past me?
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom Balastori, with Colders at 333 South Highway 100. And as we've heard tonight, and you've seen from our pre-litters, that we're very opposed to this particular batch plant in this location. We're very concerned about the public safety. We, this is a five-year project that's going to impact our community, our company, and all of the people in this, in the surrounding area near the site. Many of our employees have respiratory problems. We have 43 employees, per our insurance records, that have respiratory problems. Our building is not airtight. It's going to permeate. The dust is going to be significant. Regardless of watering, mitigation, it's not going to handle it all. We know that. We are going to be dealing with, on a seven-day-a-week, 24-hours, and we are retail business in this community that serves customers. Our customer experience is paramount to our success. And having the, having the cement trucks up and down our driveway draws considerable safety concerns. We, that is our main ingress and egress. It is our only ingress and egress to our store. It's the only place our customers and our employees can enter our facility. We make our living by selling furniture, appliances, and mattresses. In addition to that, the noise and all of the other distractions for our customers while they're in our building, tens of thousands-pound cement trucks rolling in front of our facility along the Hank Aaron Trail, which is only 54-feet from our building. We have a shell building, never was designed to handle the noise of an industrial operation. Our customers', our mattress apartment is adjacent to that wall. It's, it'll be disturbing to our customers, to our employees, while we're trying to make a sale. In addition to all of the disruption and the safety concerns with our customers, Highway 100, as we all know, because of the zoo interchange activity, is going to increase, have increased traffic. That has not been discussed here whatsoever. The path, the current proposed path is going to be significantly hinder traffic. We will have backups, 300 trucks a day, using our, our street, which, which Mr. Siebel actually clearly stated, is our responsibility. The wear and tear on that piece of roadway is already significant. It's going to be, just going to deteriorate rapidly. And there's no way that that's gonna, the dust is gonna be kept to a minimum on a daily, on daily process. So the turning onto that, onto Highway 100, it's an uncontrolled intersection. It's been an issue. There are significant accidents in that, in that intersection already. We're just going to increase the safety of our community, our employees, and our customers. In addition to all of the other issues that this plant presents to Colders and its community, our company is going to incur additional costs. Just handling the dust in our HVAC systems could require us to replace or repair those. This is over a five-year period. This is not a six-month, a one-year project. This, as someone aptly said, this is a lifetime. And as retail businesses, and everyone knows how the economy is, a bad year, there's been several businesses along Highway 100 that have gone out of business due to construction. And we've all seen that in our communities in the past. The, we have thousands of pieces of furniture. Dusting, imagine, you have one home full of furniture. We have thousands of pieces that are going to incur additional time to dust and maintain the quality of our showroom. The, our customers are gonna have a difficult time accessing our facility. As it is, with the lane closures, with the ramp closures, our customers are gonna have a hard time getting to our store. And if you're like me, if it's inconvenient, they're gonna keep going. And we can't afford to have that happen. As someone said, we pay significant taxes. It'll be almost a million dollars in taxes that we'll have paid in that five-year period. We appreciate this community. We've been part of this community for 50 years. And we want to remain a healthy, successful business here. This batch plant is not going to help us do that. Ultimately, the batch plant is dusty, dirty, and noisy. We've heard it, we've seen it, we know what it's like. Ziegago is a neighbor. They've been a good neighbor, we haven't had any issues, but they're not in our backyard. This batch plant will be in our backyard. And it will also be in our front entrance, which is even more significant to us, as we stated. So we need to find someplace else to put this plant. We don't want it not in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else with comments on public hearing number one?
My name is Bob Garbutt. And for well over 30 years, I've been an employee of Colders Furniture, making my living and helping lots of other people make theirs in West Dallas. I've enjoyed it, of every part of it. The one thing I want to emphasize, though, is that we have, as a company, and Tom mentioned it, it's going to be over a million dollars in property taxes that we will pay during the life of this five-year special-use permit. That's a lot of money. But what's that, that's the same amount of money that's at risk because of the trucks that are going to be coming around on the Henry Aaron Trail, then down through the front of our facility, up onto Highway 100, to the tune of, what was it? 30 an hour?
30 an hour, 300 a day.
300 a day. Gigantic cement trucks on the Henry Aaron Trail, right next to our building, going across the frontage road, up onto Highway 100. The backups are going to be incredible. We can't get our trucks in when those trucks are there. They can't move when our trucks are there. I don't think somebody looked at that, excuse me, that aspect of it well enough. Maybe they have, and they just haven't communicated it. That's going to be a serious, serious safety issue at the top of that roadway onto Highway 100. It's going to be very, very, very difficult if it's not controlled. Even if it is controlled, it's going to be difficult. I sat up there the last couple of days, spent about an hour looking at traffic coming over the hill now where it's not controlled, where the entrance ramps are, just north of our building there. And I couldn't believe the amount of people that are flying over that hill now. And for whatever reason, they're not understanding that it's closed up or it's changed. And they're doing U-turns at our access to northbound, crossing the lane, going to northbound. Signs are up the other day, "No U-turn." Today, the signs are gone. I don't know where they went. So I thought they would be down at the next opportunity to cross the lanes, which would be to go down into like the 650 Highway 100 building. What's the name of that building? Gray? Graybar. Graybar Electric. No sign there. And again, U-turns being made. And when those people, those lanes weren't designed for U-turns at all. That's why they're illegal there. And when they stop, they back up traffic. When they back up traffic, as everybody knows, everybody gets a little anxious and wants to keep moving. And it just creates a situation that is wholly untenable, and is going to be a tremendous safety issue for the citizens of West Dallas, the people that use Highway 100, for our employees, for our customers, for the customers of Michaels. I mean, the employees of Michaels driving those trucks. So, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of reasons, from dust to particulate matter, to HVAC systems going crazy, to just the diesel smoke from all these trucks as they go by our buildings, rumbling by 54-feet away. You're gonna be able to hear it, you're gonna be able to smell it. Coming down that road, going up onto Highway 100, it's just not a tenable plan. I would appreciate if you would help me, the rest of the employees I work with at Colders, the citizens of this community, and our customers, remain to have a viable business there, supporting the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this item?
Good evening. My name is Helen Felker. My husband and I own a building and a business, 1330 South 108. We've been proud property owners in the city of West Dallas for about 14 years now. And I would just like to briefly just say, from the viewpoint of a business owner, how difficult construction is. I understand that it's needed, in the long run, there is a benefit. But when you are the one that is in the throes of the construction, and it is right in front of you, and it affects who walks into your business, it affects you as a person, and as a family, and as a business owner, and it hurts. It hurts deep. We lost two tenants in the construction that was on Highway 100. One man brought a key over and said, "I am gone." And he left. He was gone. That was one year. Can you just say for me one more time again, sir? How long are you asking Colders, a business, to have trucks coming in and out of their only entrance and exit? How many years was that?
The request from Michaels is five years.
Eternity. I think it's an eternity. I can't imagine anything worse as a business owner, to be asked to put up with that for five years and not expect to see a huge detriment to my business. Also, as a business owner, I think I pay a lot of taxes too. Granted, not what Colders is paying, but I'm not as big as Colders. But I pay a lot of taxes, and I have to plan to pay my taxes. It irks the tar out of me that there's a company coming in here, and they're not gonna have to pay a thing. It's not gonna profit the city I do business in one bit. I feel sorry for the people that are going to live near this. You're gonna have dust like you have never seen. Get ready to change your air filters more than you ever have. Some of you are gonna have to replace your entire furnace and air conditioning systems. It just comes with it. You cannot water it down enough. You cannot. I beg of you, as a city council, please think not only of the people who live in your district, but those of us who do business in your, in your city. We love being a part of West Dallas. We want to continue to be a part of West Dallas. I am sure Colders is no different. They've been here far longer than our business has. I think you have thrown the concerns of a remarkable business in the city of West Dallas to the wind. I'm not sure that, did anybody even think how this would affect a significant business in our city? We have people who come into our business, who have frequented Colders down the road. They are significant presence on Highway 100. I don't think they should be ignored. I think you're asking an awful lot of a company. And speaking of that intersection that you go in and out of at Colders, even our own mother was hit at that intersection. My fear is, if she had been hit by a cement truck, she probably would have been dead. I just think we have not thought this through clearly enough. I understand that you want business, and they, everyone's looking to make money. It's a hard economy. But as a business owner and a building owner in the city of West Dallas, I'm not sure this is what we need to be doing. I just don't think it is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have at least one more person.
Well, my name is Ken Duberfo. I live at 737 South 113th Street, just down the street from Alderman May. We've had a, pardon me, we've had a lot of words tonight. Dust, pollution, safety, traffic control. Colders, strong argument, and I couldn't agree more with Colders. I know what it is, to some degree, in a small business, the impact of competition. For Colders to suffer this dynamic of traffic problem, when people can just go down the street to American, and they can go to Sears, they can go to Kmart, I have to really plead to the listener, Colders said, very strong, very compelling. But this is not my question. Excuse me. My question is, what about the property values? Five years. If you want to move out of our area, what's this dust and this garbage coming from the cement patch plant gonna do to your property values? Is it gonna help it? Is it, oh, you got this beautiful patch plant across there on the other side of Crescent Electronics. Your values gonna go where? Is that gonna, if the property values decrease, is the city of West Dallas gonna reduce your property taxes? Is this magnificent Michaels Corporation gonna say, "Oh, it'll make up the difference, even though we have this property exemption, so we don't have to pay any property taxes to West Dallas. But because your property taxes went down because of all of our beautiful trucks going barreling by, impeding Colders to do their business, we'll just let your property taxes go where they can go, down." Except West Dallas may alter, ameliorate, or it may alter some other concept of how your property taxes will still be the same or more. But in the meantime, you try and sell your house, and see what the property taxes and your property value has gone from there. So John, in your planning commission, have they considered the property values? In any way?
We have not evaluated that at this point.
So I'm asking this common council, ladies and gentlemen, property values are what people fight their hard-earned dollars for. They work, they bust their ass, they try and keep their places clean, they try and meet the city of West Dallas's requirements for a neat property value. And then along comes a cement plant, throws the dust with the north wind. Where is it gonna go? Right on Alderman May, Alderman Barzac, my house, Ms. Rudd's house, Joe's and Kathy's house. And all these property values are gonna go where? Certainly not north. But I bet, you can bet your bippy, it's gonna go south. So gentlemen and ladies of this all commission, I strongly say, no. Please, think about this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other questions or comments on public hearing number one this evening?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Murphy. I'm, I work for Michaels Corporation.
I am part of the applicant for the special use. First off, I want to say thank you to Mr. Mayor, all the persons and the concerned citizens of the city of West Dallas. We completely understand that this is a very controversial and contentious item. We've heard lots of comments tonight. Unfortunately, some of the items, we're fighting an uphill battle because there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. The reason we attempted to cancel the hearing tonight is because we did wanna reach out to the community. We did wanna go through and, as we received information late last week from the planner's office, we felt that it would have been appropriate with finally realizing a lot of this misinformation to reach out and sit down with the Alderman and sit down with community members and address them prior to the hearing. But we're here tonight, so we're gonna address them in this, in this fashion. We hope to still have a community meeting, hopefully invite the Alderman persons and sit down, address some of the outstanding concerns. A little disappointed in some of the comments made earlier regarding Michael's application in the process. We feel we worked very hard with the planner's office to deal with a lot of the issues. We feel as though comments regarding the site plan, our little mischaracterizations of where we sit currently, we've asked a handful of questions, when I say that, probably two pages full of questions that have not been answered by the planning department. We've attempted to get those resolved, and that's why there's some holes or gaps in our current application process, because we've asked specific questions regarding some of the landscaping items, some of the different routing issues. We've brought some different elements to this application that we hope you as a committee or as a common council will consider. And before I get into addressing some of the comments made earlier, we do, we have some members of our team here today that'll probably do give a brief couple of statements. We have an expert on pavement that we've hired to address the element that the city doesn't have any experience with, the wrapped recycled asphalt pavement. We have one of the most experienced operational managers at our organization, Mr. Tim Ferrex. He is, he's dealt with these issues throughout this, throughout the state, and we've seen this many a time. We have Mr. Mike Deblak, who's a vice president of our organization. We also have Mr. Andrew Simon, who's a staff support counsel. Kind of to lead off or to continue on, this is, this is a permitted use with reasonable conditions. Adding unreasonable conditions frustrates our purpose and the laws of the city. If you want to prevent a lot of the uses or this use that we're asking for, the city should change its statutes and change its laws. A lot of the concerns raised out here, we understand our concerns, but they're concerns that should be addressed in a different manner. We believe the city's planners' conditions are unreasonable for the following reasons. Paving the entire lot and the truck routes will be a huge, an additional expense. This is not a reasonable condition because technically we are, we'll only operate on this site for one to three years. Although our application initially requested the starting in two thousand and three, because we were not selected to work in two thousand and four, our operations won't commence until the beginning of two thousand and fifteen. So we will operate from two thousand and fifteen through two thou, the end of two thousand and eighteen. So that addresses one of the comments regarding the timeframe. We understand it's still not six months, it's not one year, it's potentially three We're also looking, paving, using a certain type of pavement materials, the, the wrap material is something that our expert's gonna talk a little bit about. He'll summarize his findings, which have been provided to the city planner's office, have been provided to you as council members regarding this item. We also see requiring the paving, as, as they have asked, is not, I'm, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. We're looking at the hours of operation item that was, that was addressed. If the DOT may require us to work at night, that is true. If we're not allowed to operate this plant during evening hours, it renders this permit useless. It's basically a rejection or denial of our intended use. We have, and which was not clearly identified, agreed to follow all city laws and ordinances, including, including the current noise ordinances that are in place. Now I wanna address a couple of items by the people of the city. Are we paying taxes because we're, we have a tax ID with the city of West Dallas? No. We are a renter. Just like with any other renter, when you pay your rent to your ta, to your landlord, that landlord has taxes that he pays to the city. That's how we will be paying taxes indirectly. We also will bring a significant amount of income through different operations such as fuel purchasing. We'll purchase items from potentially Graybar, from Northern Tool and Electric, thousands of dollars per month in miscellaneous tools and equipment. Our fuel purchases could total upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per month, operating on a good, on a, on a significant, um, operational period. We also won't be operating throughout the entire year. This is not a three hundred and sixty-five day a year, twenty-four seven operation. Our operations are intermittent at best. There will be times, yes, when we will have truck operations that will go through. We will have up to twenty-five or thirty trucks an hour, potentially. But for the most part, a majority, those operations will last two or three days in duration, and then we may be on break for two or, for a week, two weeks. We wanna make sure everybody understands exactly what we're doing at this site. We don't wanna be judged by the experiences of operations in the past. We don't wanna be judged by experience, bad experiences of others. Mr. Ferrex is gonna get up here in a little bit and explain to you some of the history behind our operations and our organization. We have, we have an excellent track record. We hear about all these different concerns about dust, traffic and noise. We have taken steps at this site and with these conditions that go above and beyond anything we've done at any other site. And Mr. Ferrex will explain in, in more detail. We have not had one complaint from, from those other locations. Kind of, right now, I'm gonna ask Mr. Nick Horniac, Dr. Nick Horniac, to get up and summarize his report that he provided to the council, so that the people of the city of West Dallas can hear Michael's suggestion and recommendation to use a superior product at this location in lieu of, uh, new asphalt paving.
My name is Nicholas Horniac. I'm, I work with, I'm an engineer with Collins Engineers in, on the south side of Milwaukee. And we were on retainer with Michael's to do some analysis, investigation of their, of the existing site conditions and make recommendations on, on pavement. Their proposal was to use the recycled asphalt pavement as their paving surface at the proposed concrete plant site. We did a site visit, looked at the existing conditions. The existing conditions there have adequate, there's an existing structural aggregate layer there from an old, uh, train rail siding. And we did some, I did, did some layered elastic analysis, some technical stuff of the pavement. And the existing aggregate base that's out there now is basically, is strong enough to, to take the loading from the truck traffic and the, and the, the equipment that they would be using. One, one concern that, that they would have on an aggregate, basically gravel surface would be, would be dust. And that was the purpose of the recycled asphalt pavement layer. And as was mentioned before, recycled asphalt pavement is basically milled off, uh, existing asphalt and, and then reused compacted, placed and compacted properly and gains a very good strength. And it's commonly used in Wisconsin, it's used every day in Wisconsin DOT work and all, pretty much all roadway work nowadays, because it's, it's a good reuse of material. It's a good way to recycle material, otherwise that would end up in a landfill. The benefit to the wrap is that because most of the aggregate particles that come out of it are still coated with, with, with the asphalt, that's the, the, basically the oil that's, that's on the aggregate, binds them together in the original HMA. That prevents a lot of the dusting issues that you would have, and it basically traps the dust. One issue you do have is that you will get dust from, from the other operations tracking, but you'll have that with any pavement. You'll have that with concrete and, but that's easily mitigated with, with water. There's other things you can do other than just watering, you can do brine, uh, brine treatments or, on this particular surface, they could, they could do some, some asphalt emulsions to, to really reduce the rot, the dust. The other, the other benefit that we saw to it was that it is a permeable pavement material, and so there's concern about some runoff. With permeable pavements, they're, they're gaining popularity, uh, 'cause they, they prevent runoff and, and this, this pavement surface that they're proposing would allow infiltration of water. The, one of the other benefits would be noise attenuation. Normally with, with rigid pavement surfaces, whether it be Portland Spanglin concrete or asphalt concrete, you do have reflection of noise and, and this pavement surface would definitely tend, tend to reduce a lot of that noise. So we, we recommended that the two-inch wrap surface was, was an acceptable pavement surface for this, this operation.
Good evening. My name is Tim Ferrex. I'm the construction manager for Michael's Paving Division at Brownsville, Wisconsin. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the last three plant sites that we have operated here in the state of Wisconsin. Even more so, let me preface this by, by the fact that I have thirty-eight years in concrete paving. And for twenty years, I've been the point man on a lot of these locations for these batch plants. I go out, do all the legwork, make contact with residents, people, businessmen, councilmen such as yourself, and try to establish a place that this batch plant is gonna be viable for us to use and have the least amount of impact on the community, the traveling public. And like always, most of the reaction, the initial reaction I get is, is negative and a lot of resistance to the fact that we're gonna put a plant somewhere and build this After we've been in there, um, most instances, if not all, the attitude has changed. I'd like to specifically talk about the last three projects that we've done. Coincidentally, they're the last three in, in the last five years, and they're all mega projects in the north-south corridor of I ninety-four, with the largest being the Mitchell Interchange. Currently, we're paving I ninety-four down south near Kenosha Highway one forty-two for a landmark. For those of you that have been down that way, it's right near the Mars Cheese Castle. We have a site down there that's located right on the Frontage Road behind Lion's Truck Parts. Mr. Uh, Mr. Peroni owns five acres there, and of that five acres, three of it, he operates as a truck service center where he's got a store in the front that he sells parts, and he's also got a garage in the back with four bays that he fixes the equipment on a daily basis. We are set up fifty feet behind his back door. I might add that that particular site is not set up on recycled asphalt. It's on concrete, our aggregate base course, otherwise known as gravel, limestone, and we currently have no issues with him. He is more than pleased with what's going on down there. He is, uh, his operations, as I was saying, involve fixing trucks in the garage in the back, and all summer long, while we were working there and trucking out of his site, he actually operated with all four of the garage doors open and the bays and had no dust issues down there. Now, one of the concerns with the town of Paris that we had, where everything that, uh, or most of the concerns were everything that I'm hearing here tonight. Noise, traffic and dust are the three big issues, are the three big impacts on the area. And to be honest with you, um, the town chairman was probably the most against us, and after I laid out my presentation to them, uh, they agreed to give us a shot. And I asked them to take me for my word, and I'm a man of my word, and I'm proud of my track record for what we've done. I think, um, Mr. Virgil Gents is the town chairman there, and I think he actually called the mayor today. I don't know if you got his message or not. Going in earlier this spring, he wanted no part of us being there. Now he's asked, "How many jobs can we bid out of that site for next year?" And we're gonna operate out of there again next year. To date, he has had absolutely no complaints on dust, no complaints on traffic, and we're running, when we're going strong, and this is not every day, but we do run three hundred trucks a day out of there on a couple of the big paving days. He's had no complaints that noise, and in a minute here, I'm gonna pass around, I can start this now with the council's permission, just a drawing that kinda shows where that batch plant is located, and it's got the measurements in feet from the local residents around this particular site. It's kind of in a rural area, but the closest site to the batch plant is two hundred and eighty feet, and the farthest one is two thousand one hundred feet. And we get no noise complaints from these people, and we're running from six to six on a daily basis. So if I can pass that along, should we take a look at that as well? And then the follow-up pictures are actually pictures of that site. One of them's taken from the freeway across the road, so you can get a good visual of the batch plant. Then I'll leave those pictures here on the table too afterwards, so if anybody wants to take a look at them, you're welcome to that. The second picture here is actually a picture of the site where you can see the plant from, from the roadway. But more importantly, what I'd like you to note in here is the size of the building that Mr. Peroni has that we're behind there. And in this one particular shot here, you can see the batch plant itself from the road. The third picture is another shot with the building in front of the plant, so you actually see how much of the plant is visible for, for the traveling public from the roadway. And again, this is a very small building. The one at Quad Graphics that our plant is gonna be behind is probably a thousand times larger than this, so the exposure's gonna be less. And this acts as a noise barrier, a very natural noise barrier, prohibits that noise from traveling out. But again, there's that one. And again, the final picture that I'm gonna pass around here is just a close-up of that, of that building, and then you can see just the top of the plant sticking out from behind Now, the, uh, one of the other sites that I've worked with is on the Mitchell Interchange. We were set up for two years about a quarter mile east of I ninety-four on College Avenue, just over the railroad tracks, um, directly behind the technical school. Kitty corner from our plant site, approximately three hundred feet away, was a trailer court. And then directly to the east of our batch plant is, the map can kinda show this a little bit right here, is what I call Hotel Alley. It's the main hotel corridor for the airport spur. There's gotta be, I don't know, fifteen major hotels in there. Prior to setting up our batch plant, I personally made contact with each one of those managers, talked to them about what we were going to do, and gave them my card. I was the contact person, that if there was any issues, I wanted to know what was going on down there. We sat in that site for two years, and again, this was a site that did not have the recycled asphalt on, on it. It was just covered with, with gravel. And we maintained dust control, we maintained noise in there, and we ran out of there at night, because a lot of that work was required to be done at night due to traffic, due to staging and due to the way the plan was designed, or the project was designed. Now, keep in mind, there was probably at any given time, five thousand people sleeping in the, in those hotels. And for two solid years, I was one of those people that was sleeping there. And again, in two years, we never got one complaint about noise or dust in that area. And just to preface this, we knew this plan, we knew this Mitchell Interchange project was coming for a number of years, so we started the legwork rather early on that. And we went to the city council in Oak Creek because the site that we picked out was perfect for this job. We went to them on several occasions, and several times, they denied the, the application for permit. And through persistency, I went through them a third time, and the mayor and the council finally said, "We're gonna give you a chance." I have presented to the council or to the planning commission a copy of the letter that I got from the city of Oak Creek, not only praising us for the job that we did there, but welcoming us back and inviting us back for any future projects there. No complaints. They tell us they got no complaints whatsoever while we were there. The last site that I wanna talk about very briefly here was a project we did five years ago on the I ninety-four corridor. It was in the southern part of the state, right on the state line near Kenosha, starting from the state line coming up. We paved there for two summers also, and we had a site that we chose through the town of Paris, or town of, the town of Bristol down there. Again, we met some resistance. We talked to the people, we had a, a public hearing down there with some input. I explained to the residents what was gonna happen. I gave them my word and my phone number, so that if they had problems, they know who to call. to call. That particular site was very interesting because it was set up about 2,000 feet, that's less than a quarter of a mile, or less than a half a mile, from the Renaissance Fair down there. Now, if any of you have ever been down there, that fair does about 5,000 vehicles on Saturday and Sunday, all weekend through the summertime. We paved down there six days a week and ran truck traffic out of there with little or no interruption to their traffic down there. Linda McFeeder is the property owner there. Again, that site did not have the recycled asphalt on it. It had just base course on it. We had no dust control issues, no noise issues, and one of her big fears was that we would have dust all over the fair on Saturday and that they would hear the sound of backup alarms and truck traffic and batch plant running and things of that nature. I stood in front of Linda and the town board down there. I asked them to give us a shot. I convinced them to let us do that. When we were done after the two-year project down there, Linda, the owner or the manager of the Renaissance Fair, went to the town of Bristol and asked them if they could leave the site intact for two reasons. Number one, for their own personal use, because we made some real nice improvements to the property. But she also wanted to make it available to us again should some work come down in that area down there. Now, the site that we're talking about here, you heard a couple of different explanations and reasonings why we want to put recycled asphalt down on there. This is a product that we put on the interstate, and after watering and rolling it, it becomes as hard as asphalt, and there is very little dust that comes from that. We think it's a very viable product to put down on a base for this plant site down there. So I hope you have a little insight on three major projects that took place right in this area. We're doing something very similar to what we're asking for, only we're going, you know, the extra mile, 10 times over, and we've had no complaints from any of those. And I mean none, from three major sites, there was not a complaint for anything in there, and we ran out of there day and night. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike DeBlak. I am the vice president of the Paving Division at Michael's Corporation. I've been just sitting back and listening to the complaints, and it's really no surprise to me. We get the exact same complaints at every meeting we go to. We believe we do things differently here at Michael's. Michael's has, it's their brand. We do a lot of different things at the corporation. The Michael's family is a privately held company. They're very proud of their name, and we're not going to do anything to jeopardize that name. We have, we're operating over 100 pits and quarries in the state of Wisconsin. We see, and many of those quarries are in and amongst some of the most populated areas of Nina and Appleton and Oshkosh and some major communities. We believe that we know how to operate and keep neighbors' concerns at bay because we know our livelihood depends on taking care of the residents and the cities. We are good neighbors. We always have been, and we always will be. What is coming? You guys are in for one of the largest construction projects in the history of Wisconsin. This is probably second to the Marquette. The Mitchell was a big undertaking. We got the Mitchell done in basically three years. It was two contracts. This is going to be almost identical, a single-year contract and a dual-year contract for what we call the core work. That's the base interchange and the four legs. Our DOT is asking us to do a lot of work in a very short amount of time, us being us as contractors. Being a contractor is not a bad thing. It's not a bad acronym. I'm proud to be a contractor. I'm proud to take my children through some of the properties and some of the interchanges and roadways and say, I built this. And you know what? I made it a lot safer, a lot more easy to travel for a lot of people. So our DOT is asking us to do this work for them, for the state of Wisconsin, for your community. You guys are going to benefit. You're going to be one of the two biggest benefitters from this work, Wauwautosa and West Dallas. You guys all border this on both sides for a long portion. Hopefully, it'll bring a lot more business and a lot more safety in your community. So we're asked to do all this work. We're asked to find sites to locate our facilities that are necessary to do this work, for us to do it safely and efficiently. So why did we pick this site? We spent a year and a half looking for sites all around the area, and we believe that we found maybe the one site that you guys would allow us to set a batch plant. During initial comment, the question was asked, what if we don't get this plant? Well, the answer was, well, then maybe somebody else will come into West Alice and ask for another site. Where is that site, sir? Where is that site that would satisfy all of these concerns? There is none, right? I mean, we all know that. So we looked at this site and said, we are going to impact virtually no one based on our knowledge of how we operate. We believe that we are experts in what we do. Yet, nobody here bothered to come down when we made the application over six months ago and asked to see our operation, planning, engineering. Nobody asked to come down to say, let's see what you can do and see if you're a fit for my community. We believe we are. The second thing, reason why we picked this, is because we believe that it will have far less impact on this community and the general traveling public than if we set our batch plant on the DOT right away, which we can do. We can do, we don't have to get a permit. We can set on the inside of an interchange, on a loop ramp, on any parcel that they have available that's under their ownership. And we may have to do that. But the problem there is, you guys were pushing the problem closer to possible residents and businesses. Some of the places we're looking at may be within 300 or 400 feet of a residence. That's the reality. We thought this would be a better proposal because we didn't want to inconvenience people. The other thing that we would be doing is, if we have to set miles and miles away, now we start adding more truck traffic to the roadways. You guys all talked about congestion and extra trucks on the road. We're just impacting that even more. Even if we don't set this site here, Michael's will bid on this work. And if we get it, we have a couple of options. We can set it somewhere else on a right-of-way, or we can buy, or another contractor can buy ready-mix from a local organization, somebody that's been in your community for a long time. We knew with meeting with the city that you, that council members, the aldermen, did not want to put traffic on Theo Trecker Way. We felt this a better option than having our trucks coming down and buying concrete from another operation in the area. That's why we're here. That's why we're asking for this site. We vetted it. We think it's a viable site. We think we can do, we know we can do the right job and make this not an inconvenience, but a positive for everybody to be, for us and the state of Wisconsin, to be building this road with the least amount of impact to the surrounding communities. That's why we're here. I think Tim did a nice job basically saying that we've been in other communities, we've gotten recommendations, we're able to control our dust and our noise. We do it every day. Some of the things I heard were, you know, we're going to choke this off and this, and that's not, that's not how it is. That's absolutely not how it is. Once again, I wish somebody would have come down and taken a look at our operation. And the last thing I do want to mention, because I heard it about 15 times, was taxes. If I would come down and rent an apartment down here, I wouldn't be paying tax directly. I would be paying taxes, I would be making a payment to the landlord, the landlord's paying taxes. That's exactly what we're doing. We are paying for this site. We're paying rent, no differently than if any of you guys own apartment buildings or build commercial buildings for hire. So we do believe we're paying taxes. It's a temporary use. It's allowable by ordinance, and that's why we're here, because it was allowed by ordinance. We're just trying to do, we're trying to do the right thing here. Believe it or not, we're trying to do the right thing. I think that's all we have. Is that correct? We're willing to stay after if there's direct questions. I don't know if the council members have questions, so I'd be willing to stay around and answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the public hearing this evening?
I'm Tom Baleschery again from Colders, and I just wanted to readdress some of our concerns. I think that Michael's made a great argument and presented a lot of information about previous sites, and they left out one very, very important thing that Mr. Garbutt really expounded on, and we, it is the route, the safety, the backup that's going to occur in that route. That is even more significant than all of the other issues that are out there, and they're all important to us and to the community. But that is our single ingress and egress for our operation. If there is nothing else, a better way to access that site, if ultimately that's the decision that's been made, we cannot, we cannot stand to have that access through our property, whether it's six months out of the year, or five years in a row, three years, whatever it is. It will be detrimental to our business and to our customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for public hearing number one. Okay. We will close our first public hearing, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on the special use permit for Anchor Bank, an existing bank to be demolished and reconstructed with a drive-through at 7401 West Greenfield Avenue.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the downtown of West Alice on the intersection of 74th Street and West Greenfield Avenue is the current Anchor Bank, as shown here below. Because the building has deteriorated significantly, leaky roofs, et cetera, it's more cost-effective for the bank to demolish the building and build a new branch office, which the city is certainly thrilled about the corporate citizen staying in West Alice. What they will be doing is demolishing their existing 6,000 square foot facility and adding a new building with about 3,400 square feet. The hours of operation are going to be typical of a bank in any of the locations in the downtown area. The bank is going to have a drive-through in its location, and because of the drive-through requires, the special use is required because of the impacts it has on traffic in that alley and in 74th Street. They'll be building, demolishing a new building, a smaller building, and then adjacent with the drive-through, and then their bank parking lot, and then they'll be splitting it off through a CSM and ultimately selling the outlet, which is about a quarter acre, 90 by 120, I believe, and keeping the balance of the property. The sites will be, install a privacy fence to avoid the headlights from cars that would come through the alley and be making a turn so that people that have outdoor dining in this area would not be impacted. Also, the area will have substantial landscaping put in the site, as well as shrubbery, new trees, and grass. The planning commission has reviewed this recommendation and has recommended approval. If there'll be questions, I'd gladly answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the common council on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Weigl.
I just wanted to point out that, obviously, I'm the affected neighbor there, and I would just want to say that I spoke to many of the residential neighbors and the business neighbors as well. We're all very excited about Anchor Bank's commitment to the downtown. It's a great example of a contractor, owner, developer, working with our staff and finding a resolution quickly that makes everybody happy. Looking forward to the groundbreaking. I'm not really looking forward to demolition right next to my home, but when all the dust is settled, it'll be a great improvement on the downtown.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments on public hearing number two from the common council?
Alderman, I mean, Mayor Devine. I was going to call on myself.
Alderman Probst.
John, my only question is that there seems to, over the years, from what I've gathered, there seems to be an image that we have on Greenfield Avenue, the Main Street community, kind of giving off a quaint-type aura. This is a very forward-thinking design. It does not look like some of the other buildings. Any thought at all? I know the planning commission approved it. I'm not trying to make waves, but was there any thought given to maybe having the facade look a little bit more like some of our other buildings?
Yes, and this probably does that. The original design was
I saw the first one.
Actually quite fascinating and interesting.
Yeah.
What they came back with, though, was basically a brick building with stone veneer and a lot of glass. I think their look that they were trying to go for was a retail look setting, but with so much glass, when you looked inside, you would actually see that it was a bank. And as interestingly enough, as the MNI, or BMO Bank up the street, when they built their branch in West Alice, that became their new model. The Summit Credit Union just opened up their new bank, or their new credit union. That's going to be their new model for their corporation. I think they're the second-largest credit union in the state. And Anchor Bank is going to use this building as their new model. So we've got some, I think we still ended up with some great architecture. I think it's going to differentiate itself slightly from the downtown area, but I think it's very compatible with the existing building structures and types.
I like this design way better than the first design that was out for it. But I just was wondering how much time had been given to blending it.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two, and I'll ask clerk to read public hearing number three.
A hearing on an ordinance to amend Section 12.42(c)(3) Community Commercial District to permit indoor auto sales as a special use within the (c)(3) Community Commercial District.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A company, a motorcycle company called Ducati, actually approached the city and said they would like to open up a showroom in West Alice. Now, our current ordinance prohibited that in the locations that they were looking at, and because we require at least an acre of land for vehicle sales. Now, they had proposed something different in that it would be indoor only, and we said we will look at anything, but we have just recently adopted that ordinance about two or three years ago, or maybe even a bit more than that. But what they wanted to be able to do is distinguish themselves from the other types of operations, and this is not for Ducati. This is for all vehicles that would want to have indoor sales only. Right now, it's only allowed, vehicle sales are only allowed in (c)(4) and (m)(1) with a half acre. This would allow it to be also in a (c)(3) district and parcel less than a half acre. It's kind of hard to see in this photograph, but the yellow is the (c)(3) areas that would now be eligible for indoor vehicle sales. And then the light blue are the (c)(4) Commercial District and the Manufacturing Districts that would be allowed because it would be less than an acre. So that would be the areas that would be impacted should this ordinance be adopted by the common council. Interestingly enough, a lot of the old auto repair dealerships are today's auto repair facilities. With the adoption of this ordinance, one of the advantages would be allowing some of these buildings to be used for, at a higher use, and hopefully less disruptive on the neighborhood. Certainly, on the downside is how do you deal with vehicles or even motorcycles that are going to be coming going to be coming out of there, that somebody wants to test drive them, and then are they test-driving to a residential neighborhood? Those things could be dealt with when the special use is held for the particular site. But what we have before here tonight is just the idea of, would you be interested in allowing indoor vehicle sales? The Plan Commission has reviewed this recommendation and has recommended approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
John, can you put that map back up? Those areas down in districts four and five appear to be Zoo Freeway, 894. So really, it looks like the primary impact would be to districts one and three. Is there any plan maybe to, have people been noticed of this, who live in close proximity to this, these zones?
No, this is, it's not a rezoning, we're amending the zoning ordinance. Now, excuse me, we're still making a special use. So, if, if you were to approve this, Ducati, for example, would still need to apply for a special use, and then we'd have a public hearing, and we could, for example, require exiting only onto a major arterial, I mean, there's lots of things that could be done. So right now, it's just the idea of, would you be receptive to it? And if you were, then they'd have to come back in for a special use hearing.
My concern is that, what we just learned from previous applicants is that when you allow this sort of thing, the special use means it's permitted, but with restrictions on them. Basically, you know, what sort of things might we be opening up? I'm not opposed to certain dealership, but that's not really the question at hand. I'm just, I'm just curious to know if maybe this is something that we should try and get some more, more information out to residents about this and how it could impact them. That's all I'm asking. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Barzak.
One more time, John, is it just red? Is it red and yellow? Is it red, yellow, and green? It was a little confusing, and it's really, really, really tough to see on that map.
The, the map that we had, that we were looking at in our office was a lot clearer, sorry. We will get you copies of this, so that you can see exactly where those areas are.
What colors are they?
The yellow, the yellow is probably the biggest change, because the yellow is the (c)(3) Commercial Districts, primarily in the major arterials like National Avenue, Lincoln, et cetera. Those would be the new areas that this would, that vehicle sales would be allowed indoors.
Okay, vehicle sales indoors. So, I want to open up a shop on Highway 100, I guess would be the place, and I want to bring in, you know, 1985 Saterian, and I want to bring in some, you know, some kind of crummy vehicles, and I'm going to be indoors and have nice windows for people to see this. It would be permitted under special use.
Correct.
So, so anybody now that wanted to open up any type of a car dealership, as long as they were all inside, would be permitted?
Yes.
With the special use. But again, as we saw tonight. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number three. And I will now ask clerk to read public hearing number four.
A hearing on the 2014 City of West Alice Mayor's Recommended Budget.
Mr. Zeeler.
I will be presenting the summary of the 2014 Recommended Budget as recommended by Mayor Devine, and this is simply a summary with some charts to highlight certain things, and I'll be happy to answer any detailed questions that I may not cover initially in going through it. You got it? Let's click right. Okay, this first chart shows, just in summary fashion, the major funds and major departments of the city. The numbers circled up at the top, 1.2 percent. The general fund expenditures are increasing by that amount in this recommended budget from $56 million, almost $100,000, to $56,774,000. So this general fund budget includes a 1 percent, a 1.2 percent increase. The other numbers circled there, just to point this out to you, the category of the general expenses is going down over 50 percent, and that's because some money that was billed into contingency fund for the last couple of years are transferred into other accounts for salaries from past years. So it looks like a huge reduction, but it's just been transferred into other accounts. Couple of other things to point out on this chart. The assessed value has dropped from a little over $4 billion to a little over $3.7 billion, or an 8.6 percent drop in assessed value. The next item circled below is the tax levy is proposed in this budget to go up 3/10 of 1 percent. That's it, and the average taxes on a average-priced home, $150,000, with the assessed value drop and the tax levy increase of 3/10 of a percent, the average-priced home should see, should see a slight drop in their taxes, when all instead have done not quite 1 percent, about 7/10 of a percent drop in property taxes. To point out the number of total employees for the city, we had 518 authorized this year. Next year, this budget proposed 515 budgets, or about 6/10 of 1 percent decrease, a small decrease. This chart shows in a bar chart form, just to give you a pictorial presentation, where most of the money come, or where most of the money goes to support that average tax bill of $1,558 for general city purposes. The blue category covers the big part of that, 500, or $884. That's for safety, health, and culture. That's basically the police and fire departments, the health department, senior center, and the library. So the biggest part of our city expenditures goes to that. This is a lot of detail of the budget. I'll be happy to come back and answer any questions about anything specifically, but I'll just flip through these real quick. This is the revenue, and then this is the expenditures. I know it's hard to, hard to read that, that's why I can come back to this. Here are the budget positions for the city for the coming year. I mentioned 518 dropping to 515. There were actually three positions dropped by the departments and two new ones added by departments. And then in the Mayor's Recommendations and Review, there was another two positions dropped in the Mayor's review of it. So, we had a decrease of five, an increase of two for that reduction of three. You can see how the number of city employees have dropped over the last 30, 40 years. At one time in 1970, we had 750 positions, and today we're like about a little over 500. So, we are providing more services with a couple hundred less people. This shows our fund balances, the contingency fund and the general fund, those two amounts are always about $3 million, which is 5 percent of our general fund. Specifically for next year, we say those balances would be $3,214,000 or $2,998, almost each one about $3 million. This is some more detail on some of the other fund balances, as this is. This is a chart showing our legal debt limit. The total value of the city is $3,701 million. The state law allows us to have 5 percent of that amount as our legal debt limit. That would give us $185 million of debt that we could go up to. We currently have $78 million of debt, so we're only approximately 42 percent of what we could have borrowed. In other words, we have over $100 million of remaining debt limit that we have no intention of borrowing, but we have the comfort of being well under our debt limit. This shows what has happened with the allowable levy over the last few years with the advent of Act 10. You can see how the game changed, so to speak, where our levies were averaging a little over $1 million a year, and with Act 10, with levies being limited to net new construction, which in our case of a fully-developed city, is basically a fraction, or this year was actually a negative net new construction. So the levies have significantly dropped down to very small amount the last couple of years, and that's because of the net new construction being so low and the use of a little exemption on using debt to allow the levy to increase for that purpose. Again, this is kind of hard to read. This is a summary for each of our different funds of how the tax levy is broken down. This chart shows the change in our levy cross-matched with the CPI, and you can see how the dark blue is the levy, how it is going, and the pink is how CPI has, has either followed that or not followed that. This is showing assessed value, what's happened over the last five years, beginning with the difficulties in the economy, beginning in '08 or '09. You can see there was a drop in assessed values, which began with our reassessment in 2010. It dropped from $4,275 million down to $4,800,000. And the last time we did that revaluation in '10 for '11, and now we've done a revaluation in '13 for use in '14. You can see that finally with this revaluation this time, the $4,800,000 is dropping down probably what is realistically had happened as a result of the last five years of the drop in the economy. The value is probably now down to about where it should be, a little over $3.7 billion, resulting from the drop over the five years, and we did two revaluations during that time. This is the tax rates by broken down. The tax rate is going up only because the value is going down, but as our example showed, on the average home, the taxes should drop slightly, because as the value drops and the rate goes up, there still is a slight decrease in the property taxes. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeler. Are there questions or comments from the common council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
I'd like to quickly mention that, though we don't often ask a lot of questions at this meeting regarding the budget, that members of the council, I know, do work very diligently behind the scenes, asking questions of various staff members, working in committee, that just because you don't see us asking questions here tonight doesn't mean we're not working feverishly behind the scenes, trying to find ways to find efficiencies, provide a higher value and standard of living for as low costs as we can. Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Singsek.
As a follow-up to Alderman's comments, I can reaffirm what he indicated. He came to our last meeting a week ago with about six or seven pages of questions, and we just basically recommended he talk to Mrs. Zeeler in advance of today's public hearing. But a reminder to all members of the council and those in the public who wish to further review or listen to the committee in terms of discussing the budget, we will be meeting at 6 o'clock on Monday, November 11th, with respect to the subject matter of the public hearing this evening. We will discuss the appropriation budget, the ordinances, resolutions, in terms of two weeks from now, when the council will be voting on the budget.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments on this item from the common council? Seeing, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close our fourth public hearing, and we will move on to item E on your agendas. I'm sorry. We will reopen the public hearing.
Jeff Claus, West Alice resident, 93rd and Beecher. Been paying taxes here for about 24 years. 2012 census count, Greenfield has 37,072 people. Greenfield city budget for 2014 is $46,682,413. $46,682,413 divided by 37,072 comes out to $12,592,444 per resident. What does West Alice spend per resident?
I don't have that number in front of me. I can figure it out and give it to you in a-
West Alice, 2012 US Census, 60,732 residents. West Alice 2014 city budget, $123,600,673. $2,026.29 per resident. What are we doing different?
I'd be happy to talk to you during the recess if you'd like.
$767 more we're spending. Do we have gold dust in our streets? Are our cops better? Are our firemen better? Where's the, where's the discrepancy?
Again, Mr. Claus, I'd be happy to discuss this with you at recess.
Have city services been studied for turnover to private sector contractors for cost savings? Broad range. Have they? Have there been?
We have, before I was in office, there was a study done on privatization of some of the services, yes.
Has that been revisited?
Not in the last five years.
Don't you think it's time? Shouldn't that be something on an ongoing basis, constantly? You say you're constantly looking for efficiencies and giving us the best quality of life for the least possible money? Isn't that something you should be doing on an ongoing basis? How can we get the best bang for our buck? Your residents, you have a net new construction of what? Was that negative?
Yes.
Negative net new construction?
Right.
But we're supposed to pay more because our property values are cratering? We're supposed to pay more money to live in a city with a negative net new construction? And we're supposed to be happy that we pay less on the bottom line? We're not paying less because y'all are spending less? That's not why we're paying less money, folks. We're paying less money because your house is worth less money. They're spending more money. Don't you get it? Your property tax might go down. It goes down because your value went down. They're spending more money. For what? Zero net new construction last year, but y'all- Zero net new construction last year, but y'all want more money to do whatever it is you do in this city.
If I may, it's providing the same level of services at a higher price.
Yeah. Providing the same level of services as other cities around here at a higher price.
Because the car costs are increasing.
If health, safety, and culture, police, fire, and library, and the health department are the biggest balls in the jar, why can't they be cut? Page V in your budget, health department recommended no changes? You said in, in, you said you, you asked every department to look for changes and ways to efficiency, you know, look for efficiencies and ways to, you know, what can we do better? Health department recommended nothing. That's on page V of your budget. They couldn't find one area to cut back.
The, the, and the mayor's recommended budget, there were some changes made by the mayor with respect to the health department.
But the health department found nothing. The people running the health, you had to do it. The people running the health department couldn't find a thing. Are these the best people to run the health department? Do we have the best and the brightest? Seriously? With the Affordable Care Act coming onboard October 1st, are there services the health department is doing that they don't need to be doing anymore? Have we looked into that? Is that something that we should look into? Probably. There's probably a lot that the health department does that they don't need to be doing. It's not 1978 anymore, people. Okay? Your citizens are cutting back every single month. They're finding ways to cut back because they have to. You guys aren't. You guys are saying, "Don't worry, your taxes are going down." Our taxes aren't going down because you're spending less money. Our taxes aren't going down because you're the most, the most efficient government around here. Our taxes are going down because our houses are cratering. How about a 5% across the board, every single department, 5% across the board, cut? How about you vote on that? How about a 3% cut? I've had to do it. I own a business. I've had to eliminate positions. I've had to take away, I've had to make my employees pay more for their healthcare. Okay? I've had to stretch out buying vehicles. I've had to find real efficiencies in the private sector. Okay? In my business. Y'all have to do that too. I've cut way more than 3% out of my company. You guys can find that easy. Don't tell me that there isn't 3% of fat in this city. Not at, not at those numbers. Not when we're spending 767 dollars more per head than Greenfield is. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the audience on this item for public Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number four. And we will move on to item E on your agenda, citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move on to item F on your agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those page numbers are on page two. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. A couple things this evening. I just want to remind everybody that Monday, November 11th is Veterans Day. I ask that you all take a moment to remember those who have fought for the freedoms that we enjoy and often take for granted every day. Um, there will be, as this Alderman Roeth had called me, there will be some type of ceremony. We're working with the VFW post at Veterans Park on Monday, but the details are still being formulated. We will get it on the city website and, um, the city marquee sign and every other possible mode we can. A reminder that on the 25th of November, the Community Breakfast of Thanksgiving is having, uh, is happening, rather. This will be at Clemmer's again. This is a fundraiser for local food pantries. Tickets are $20. It is, uh, the morning, the morning of November 25th at 7:15. It is a buffet breakfast followed by a program. Lastly, the Christmas Parade is approaching. Uh, mark your calendars for December 7th. It is last call if anybody is interested in participating or volunteering. We have a website up, WAChristmasParade.com, or you can call my office for more information. Uh, that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the Alderman?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Probst.
Um, recently I had an opportunity to, uh, work with a former student who has found herself in some pretty negative situations and, and circumstances right now, and with her three small children has found herself homeless. And it really gave me pause to start to realize and think about what we don't have in this community and, and what might be out there. And I guess before we start looking at, at businesses and other things, let's look at ourselves. So I guess I'm, I'm imploring everyone, if you know of someone who maybe doesn't have a place to sleep, reach out. Sometimes that's all it takes is to remember that, uh, not everybody gets to sleep in a warm house at night. And when this affects children, it's, it's equally heartbreaking. So, if you know of someone in a dire situation or circumstances, we do have resources in, in, in the greater Milwaukee area, so reach out and ask for help. Um, and contact an Alder person if you don't know where to go, because we do have some resources that we can direct you to. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alder persons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Reiki.
Uh, most of all, I would say all of us have received the latest newsletter. And if you've read the newsletter, and I'm hoping all of you read the newsletter, because it really is the pulse of the community, uh, on the front, on the very front page is a, a plea, you might say, for volunteers. We, as a community, are asking for your help, uh, volunteering on, on different commissions, on committees, um, on boards. Uh, these are very, um, very valuable entities for our community, because you, as a citizen, can give your ideas, um, promote your agendas, and, and we need your input on these communities. It provides a very valuable service to our community as such. Uh, within these past several weeks, we have honored the block captains, uh, who we feel are our eyes and ears of our community, because people in neighborhoods know what's going on and, uh, we, we solve a lot of problems through the block captain program. We also honored the senior center volunteers who provide many, many hours of service, um, volunteering to, um, head a, head a, a committee, you might say, in, in, in the senior center itself, giving classes, giving instructions. These provide, you might say, efficiencies to our city. They save us money and we thank them very much for their service hours, because they're very dedicated people, um, and I commend them, because they basically, um, keep our city rolling. They help us, they help us basically keep our community safe and, um, make it a pleasant place to live. And we should all thank them, uh, in some way, shape, or fashion. And please, if you, uh, would like to volunteer, please call the mayor's office. Uh, there are brochures that you can fill out, um, to serve your community in some way, shape, or form. We certainly, as a council, appreciate all your efforts on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other reports from the Alder people this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of October 15th, 2013.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Singstock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'll ask for a motion to refer item number five to the city attorney for legal opinion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Probst, second by Alderman May. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, standing committee reports, administration and finance committee.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Singstock.
I shall report out number six since evening's agenda. Following, uh, the recess, we will reconvene and we'll report that as part of the new business matters.
Okay. Uh, license and health committee, Alderman Chaplasky.
Mayor Devine.
Sorry. I could have moved my chair now.
I'd like to first report on items number seven through 12 on tonight's agenda. These are various license and reports. They are voted for either approval or placed on file by all five members. I'd like to move for adoption this portion of the committee's reports.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Reiki. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Then we have item number 13. This is a tavern license. It has voted for approval by four members, one member voting no. I'd like to move for the adoption of this portion of the committee's report. Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Singstock. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Um, anticipating a question as far as my no vote on this, um, I would just mention that the applicant, uh, has a felony conviction for burglary. Um, he did note it on his application, but nonetheless, um, he did have a felony burglary conviction. It was apparently from his place of work at the time, and, uh, it was in, the conviction was in 2004. So, if anybody has a question, that's what it was about.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Alder person Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
Aye.
Roeth.
Aye.
Singstock.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
No.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chaplasky.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries.
Then we have item number 14. Uh, this is another tavern license. Four members voting to approve, one member voting in opposition. I'd like to move for the adoption of this portion of the committee's report.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Barzak. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Again, uh, the reason for my no vote, this particular applicant on her application put down no. She had never been ticketed, arrested, convicted, or fined for any violation. She checked the no box. She has 10 convictions, mostly traffic, but there is an OWI on her. She does have a drunk driving conviction on. Again, that would be my reason, her inability to read a form correctly, fill it out, and be honest with the committee.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
I happen to watch this, uh, license and health committee meeting like I do all of them, and I have to agree with Alder person Weigel on this one. I mean, I, there was one point during the, during the hearing where she blatantly said, "You know, I was just in a hurry and I just kinda just did what I had to do and got out." I don't even think she paid attention to the form. Um, along with the record, I think it calls into question, um, the person's seriousness and understanding of the license that they're holding. Thank you, Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman May. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Alder person Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
Aye.
Roeth.
Aye.
Singstock.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
No.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chaplasky.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
No.
Eight in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries.
Then we have item number 15. This is for an extension of premises. Once again, it was voted for approval by four members, one member voting no. I'd like to move for the final part of the, uh, committee's report.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Oh, Mayor Devine, my turn.
Please elaborate, Alderman.
The, uh, this comes into the, uh, extension of premises, which would be a deck. And when this all started off, um, I was quite involved, actually, and it was for food purposes. If you had a restaurant, you were serving food, it'd be a food court, food deck, whatever. Um, and we were granting these decks. One thing led to another, and then pretty soon it was, "Well, I'm serving pizzas. Does that work?" I didn't think so. I voted against them, but other people thought yes. And now it's down to just a pure deck. And for any reason at all, if you want to extend your premises and you want to put a smoking deck out, you're now allowed to do so. It just kinda evolved into that. Uh, but I'm gonna stick to my grounds, and I think they should be for restaurants. I think you should have a kitchen. I think you should have a menu, and then you can have a deck. But, uh, to go to any bar in the city of West Dallas and offer a deck for extension of premises, uh, this one happens to be right next door to houses, um, we did have that in there for a while. Wow, we're gonna keep it away from houses. Everything's been dropped. If you want a deck now and you own a bar, you can have it, uh, but I disagree. So, that's why my no vote.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
Quick question. If this bar did not get a deck and people wanted to smoke outside, would they be allowed to smoke outside anyway? My question being, does the deck enable outdoor smoking, or is it just a matter of fact?
Can I answer that? Should I answer?
It's a bit of a loaded question. I think people don't like to smoke outside.
Well, here's the, uh, here's the thing. The same guy came to me and he wanted to put a deck out for smoking. I wouldn't have a problem with that. He wants to extend his premises to take booze out there. So, there's, he's extending his bar, his square footage. I would not have a problem at all with any bar in the city wanting to put out a little smoking extension covered, that they can go out there and smoke and go back in, but not take their alcohol out. In this particular case, that he's, he wants to extend his bar premises where they can go out there with alcohol for no reason except basically to smoke or to sit out there with drinks. And that's what I have a problem with. I think they should be for eating, but again, if it was just, just to go out there and smoke and not extend, I would have not, no problem with it at all. Same place.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
And I like to sometime kind of hold down on my comments or, uh, my feeling really regarding the, uh, the outdoor. You know, it seems like, uh, in many cases, we continue to, uh, to have it somewhat, you know, I call it closed-minded, really, because what really occurs in many parts of the world, they do have outdoors, whether people can sit outside, as, as long as restricted, as long as restricted. You know, I don't see any problem. I mean, when somebody tried to invest some money within the community and, and they do abide within our rules, why, why we should hold some of the, uh, small business hostages? You know, when somebody tried to maybe enhance or spend some money to invest, you know, in this case it's a tavern, so maybe he's gonna have some pizzas out there. Maybe not. But as long he lives within and he lives out in good standing in regard to, to operate his business, I'm for. You know, for many years ago, back 25 years ago, there wasn't no, no such things of outdoor dining or outdoor smoking, because everybody could smoke inside the taverns. But we do all of today, many bars within our community to have outdoor smoking and some outdoor dining just as well. So that's why I'm, I'm in favor. It's my district, and I feel, uh, if, if the gentleman is going to put some money into his premises and running a good business, I'll give him a chance.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Alderman Singstock.
This, uh, particular applicant, I believe, was also in front of the public safety committee. Uh, they had to pass upon special use in, in terms of, uh, extension of deck, and I believe they were gonna, uh, serve some food out on the deck. My, uh, my thought, my reaction to this particular applicant is, well, one, although it's not of great magnitude, nonetheless, it's some form of economic development. This has been a vacant site for, uh, double-digit years. It's on 60th Street. It's been an eyesore. Um, couples coming in from out of state, um, with their capital. They wish to, uh, to expand upon the premises. They're, I believe, are gonna be living at the premises, uh, pursuant to whatever our planning commission and our, uh, our public safety committee, uh, considered at the time of their discussion with the applicant. I believe they have to some type of screening up, whatever they're satisfied with, and this simply gives, uh, this business person, I think we have to be business friendly, an opportunity to come into West Dallas, uh, purchase a property that's been vacant for double-digit years, to expand upon a vacant lot, put a deck out there, put some type of screening, and let's get them back to business, and also, uh, we'll and let's go back to business, and also let's serve residents in the nearby area. And also, from the aesthetic perspective, it's an improvement to the East End. That's my thoughts, and that's why I voted in favor of this applicant.
Thank you, Alderman Singstock. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Barzak.
Just going to finish with one last thing, and I understand that he's, you know, extending his premises, putting a deck out, but I also understand we're giving him $25,000. Is that correct? I believe he got a grant from the city for $25,000 for some of the improvements. Correct? Yes, no?
I believe he was applying for a facade grant, but I'm...
I think he got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on item 15? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
Aye.
Roeth.
Aye.
Singstock.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
No.
Chaplasky.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Alderman. We'll move to item L on our agendas, a motion to reconsider.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Chaplasky.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider and send this back to committee.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Barzak. Is there any discussion?
Purpose, Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
Purpose for the reconsideration?
She was not at our last meeting, and she, her attorney called us and asked if we would reconsider it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
So motion with a second by Alderman Reiki. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.